Coming over.
Okay, calling tonight's meeting to order. Welcome. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Your Davis.
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Here.
Treasurer De Vardy.
De Vardy here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Fleming. Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Here.
Trustee Millschain.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
A move.
Support.
Uh, Tab A, you said recommendation that the border trustees approve the minutes of the October 24th, 2023 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move approval.
Support.
Are there any verbal communications?
We should probably vote on these things. Once we, once we move it and support it.
Minutes.
Just a voice vote is good.
For the, first the approval of the agenda.
Are we doing agenda or minutes? Let's do both at the same time.
Go ahead.
I believe that we approve the agenda and the minutes in a single voice vote.
Support.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.
All right. Let's see what the glasses have going. I don't know. All right. It is December 2023. So it does sound cliche to begin my remarks by noting how fast time has gone by this term, but that is indeed the truth. While we are weeks away from the start of 2024, many of us are still trying to process the changes on campus since August. Notably, the faculty here are still working through the changes in the Office of the Instruction. Uh, and appreciate Dr. Tucker's steady countenance. We welcomed Dean Nichols to the HSS Division. We celebrated the retirement of Marvin Balut, and we are looking forward to a new hire in the library, allowing Sandy McCarthy to return to her librarian position. The WCC EA has been busy working with the administrators and members regarding student issues or other concerns. Discipline concerns are never comfortable, and I so value the work of the WCCA leaders to manage these issue, issues with grace. There remains just one active grievance that is currently in arbitration. However, there have been conversations over the past two weeks that give us confidence that in 2024, there will be further talks around the issues of this grievance, moving us to a resolution. I want to thank the members of the WCC EA and VP Jennings for their continued work through open, open communication. Now, yesterday, President Belloc and I were pleased to welcome, uh, VPI Tucker and Vanessa Brooks, along with the WCCA Board members, Ally Fornier, Nikki Lee, and Dave Wooton to lunch to discuss plans for 2024. Winter 2024 will be another time of transition as I step down from my role in March after the next WCC EA election and retire in August of 24. Therefore, we've been considering a variety of different ways to better communicate and keep members, uh, our members, our administrators, the Board of Trustees current on issues. So for the Board, you are going to be receiving a newsletter of sorts beginning tonight. The newsletter will allow WCC EA to provide additional information and color to many of the issues we speak about monthly. In some cases, we may send this information to you electronically, or like tonight, I'm going to provide handouts. Uh, attached to the letter, you're going to be, uh, seeing some other supporting documentation, uh, for your review, and tonight you're going to see, uh, an attached memo from 2014 regarding changes for counselors that were very much in question 10 years ago. There remain concerns over our current LPC group as well as advising and case managers. There are no easy answers to how we deal with these situations that the students are presenting, but we know that continued conversations towards solutions are part of that process. So also attached to the letter is a document that was shared with faculty by the online faculty group, OFAC, uh, in early December. This, like the details I provided regarding the LMS conversations in September, is a good example of what, what is being shared with faculty and administration. The WCC EA hopes that this newsletter will provide a fuller picture to the Board uh, of how decisions and actions are made and perceived on campus. So we, of course, will welcome any questions. And while I want to hold on to our winter break as long as possible, I do look forward, uh, to the first WCC EA Unity Lunch since January 2020. This will be held on June 3rd, 2024 in ML. Uh, coffee service will begin at 11:30 and lunch will be served at 12:00. Uh, the, the lunch will be for all members of the WCC EA, the WCC OPTA, and Ask Me Unions, and the Board of, of Trustees are cordially invited to join us for that wonderful event, and there's no need to RSVP. There will be plenty of food and, of course, excellent company, uh, for that. So with that, I have a handout for you. And it went with green. Thank you, thank you.
2020 is when I retired. That was.
So with that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer anything that you might have for me tonight. Yes.
Um. As President of the WCC EA, I started having Unity Lunches in the winter semester, but I never invited the Board.
Uh, we just thought about it. Why not? There's always so much food and it's right here, so you may as well join us and see all of the unions. Uh, and we usually have a couple hundred folks, um, that show up for that, so it's great. It's a good, good time. Anything else? Would you like to join us, Rose? Sure. You are welcome to join us as well.
Oh, I never invited the President. That never happened.
It will be a curious sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Anything else? Like the classroom, yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing none. Any written communications? None? Okay, thank you. Uh, special reports, Veterans Center update, Provost Linda Blakie.
Oh, excuse me. Ah, see, I asked. Thank you.
I didn't say that, Ms. Provost Linda Blakie. Okay. All right, Tab B, monthly port, reports, excuse me, personnel recommendations. The recommendation is that the border trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Some of.
Or.
Any questions, any comments?
Always. I'm sorry.
Uh, C. Hatcher?
Yep. Um. Are we currently looking for a new faculty member in, uh, Life Sciences? Or is that something for spring, for next year? How are we handling that?
Dr. Tucker.
That is something that we're going to look for fall.
For fall. And so someone's there now part-time or taking up the slack?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The, the faculty have, uh, will start reading February with the goal to have a person in place for fall.
Okay. Um, in recruitment and outreach, there's still one vacant position? Is that correct? Person. Stephanie Perez is there and there's still one vacant position? Yes, no, maybe?
They're all filled.
They're all filled? Okay, good. And on the second page, uh, what's J A T six nine six nine? Say again? Oh, that's the Sprinkler Pitters. Yay, thank you. That's it, I'm sorry.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Thank you. I just want to give, um, recognition to, um, two people that, um, are ending their employment. One, one is Marvin Blunt, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly, in Life Sciences of 16 years. Wish him well. And full-time employment again is Valencia Kyle, Custodian Fire Range with 20 years' experience. Uh, I, I wish them both good luck in their future. And thank you so much.
Any, anyone else? Um, all in favor to accept the, um, the recommendations as submitted?
A move.
It's been moved and seconded already.
Oh.
Has?
Yes, they all favor. Yes. Okay. Moving on.
It's a voice vote.
Yes. That's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you. Moving on, moving on to Tab C of our financial reports for November 2023.
I, I move we accept the financial reports for 2023.
Support.
And I guess, uh, we'll hear from our CFO and then vote on it or have discussion.
VP Barnes, thank you for approaching the podium. You have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, I'll just give you a quick overview of where our financial stand as of the end of November. Let me just scroll to the right page. Okay. Um, I'll focus first on the winter tuition. Uh, if you look at the very last column where it says year-to-date variance, uh, that shows how we're doing, uh, year-to-date. So if you look at the winter tuition, uh, this is as of the end of November. Our credit hours were up about 5% at the time. Uh, it, it's still up, uh, as of today, about 3%. So still doing very well, uh, as we approach the winter semester with, uh, quite a couple of weeks to go. Uh, student fees, of course, in line with that, also up. Uh, looking at local property taxes, uh, a little bit up, mostly timing, could be a little bit of upside at the end of the year. Uh, state appropriations, that $1.2 million variance, uh, that i- is likely to, to stay because, um, if the Board recalls, we budgeted for 2% in state appropriations, but Washtenaw actually received the highest appropriation of, uh, percentage-wise of any community college. So that's a, a good variance there. Uh, trade partnerships, we had a, our best UA event ever, uh, this past summer. So that's, uh, contributed to that variance there. Investment income, we had, uh, planned on, uh, interest rates being at 3%, uh, but you probably have all seen interest rates have been quite a bit higher than that, uh, in, in excess of 5%. So we've earned, uh, more than we expected on the, on our money, uh, that's in the bank or in, in commercial paper. And, um, in auxiliary activities, uh, we had a, a very good year because we had a surprise visit from the IDEW, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. So that contributed a lot to our conference services and our conference service revenue. So revenue doing quite good so far. Uh, expenditures, uh, a lot of this is timing, uh, so far this year, as well as, um, some vacancies, uh, that we've experienced, uh, year-to-date. Um, but largely, um, that's going to be about half timing and about half vacancies. Are there any questions or anything you'd like me to address specifically?
Is the Health and Fitness Center still, um, going in the right direction?
Yes. Yeah, the, the Health and Fitness Center, we're expecting them to earn $750,000 this year. Uh, so far, uh, they're on track to do that. Uh, they did have a little bit of a hiccup because of the, the cooling situation in August. Some, uh, the air conditioner went down for a while, so some members took, uh, what we call a bridge. In, in other words, they didn't have to pay their dues for that month. So that did, um, bring it down a bit, but I'm still expecting that we'll hit the 750,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. And, yes. Do I hear a motion to, uh, accept the financial reports as submitted? They did, however?
So moved in and supported by.
That's right, you did. Thank you, Dave. Have a all-in-favor vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have a facilities development report, Tab D with VP Beschi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll, I'll give a quick bit on the, um, capital reports and touch on a few deferred maintenance. So we have two, uh, active capital projects ongoing. First is a shipping-receiving, uh, building and the maintenance garage. That design will be wrapped up, uh, early in January, and then we will send that out for bids and, um, hopefully get pricing back in January and, uh, get that construction contract awarded in March or April and, and start the construction. We just made a few modifications to, uh, the shipping-receiving building and added some air conditioning in the, uh, mailroom, which was not in the original scope, but something we felt we needed to add to, uh, help, um, deal with a humidity problem with, uh, the mailroom operation. So that added a little bit more time to the design. The other project underway is the campus-wide camera upgrade. That design, uh, was finished in late November. We did go out for bids on the 4th of December. Should have pricing back, uh, on the 22nd of this month, and then, uh, be ready to award contracts in early January for that. Under the deferred maintenance projects, uh, if you look at, uh, project number eight, the baseball diamond backstop, we made some modifications to that design, sent it out for rebids in October. Pricing came back in Novor- uh, November. Um, happy to report that we actually found a contractor, um, that is, uh, going to begin that work in February. Uh, and then the pricing came in very favorable, um, under, considerably under the budget number that we were carrying. So, um, hopefully by March of '24, the baseball diamond will have a backstop and the baseball team can play baseball. The other project, uh, number 10, Campus LED Upgrade Phase Two. This is an ongoing, uh, project to update, uh, upgrade lighting over to LED. Uh, over the holiday break, there's really three big areas that we're going to do quite a bit of work that we could not get into, uh, normally during the school year. So, um, a lot of work being done on the first floor to the Student Center, uh, lighting, a lot of lights being, uh, replaced and upgraded on the first floor of the LA Labs, and also, uh, the Automotive Labs in the OE Building. Um, and that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
How often is our baseball diamond used?
Well, I mean, we have a club sport. Um, I, I can't, I mean, I couldn't answer that, but we also have a partnership with, um, a charter school that, that rents it out during a baseball season. So it gets, um, I, I don't know if it's five days a week, but it gets used by two baseball, uh, our club sport as well as a charter baseball team.
So with our backdrop needing repair, they have had to go somewhere else, so that meant that our diamond has been down for several months then?
Over a year.
Look at it? A year?
The first bid?
Yeah, what was the first bid?
Was over for, it was ridiculous.
I'm sorry?
Six-figure bid, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah. So the original backstop blew over, um, the wind blew it over. We, um, got a design, the original design was, um, whether it was overdesigned, was, was, uh, you know, well, it turned out to be overdesigned because it really had a, a windscreen that was larger than it needed to be. So we revisited it with the baseball club sport director and, uh, dialed back what needed to be put in for a, uh, solar, uh, windshield. And, um, consequently, it, it reduced the design of the fencing and made it, uh, constructible. Made it, made it more.
How long it would be, how long is the expected turnaround once they begin construction? How long will it take before that diamond is back up and running? Because wouldn't we also have to do some upgrades to the actual grounds? Because unless they're just maintained anyway, grounds meaning like the sand and the dirt around it and, and such?
Um, at this, at this point, we're going to replace the baseball diamond, uh, the backstop. Um, we, we looked at and we, there are some plans to, um, upgrade the dugouts as well, um, in the future. And we also have a plan to help, uh, improve the drainage, the overall drainage of the field. But at this particular point, um, we will have the backstop installed by March, and this, the field should be back to the condition it was.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Changing subject. On line 15, um, the HFC replaced Showline generator. What is that?
Uh, I'm sorry, number 15?
15. I, I don't know if I'm pronouncing the word C-H-O-L-E-N.
Yeah, it's a, uh, so we replaced the chlorine generator in the Health and Fitness. Yes.
Chlorine.
Should have been, should have been, it should be chlorine.
Okay, that, that makes more difference.
That was replaced, uh, this, this month in December.
Okay, all right. And one more question. Uh, 16, uh, the SCB restaurant, restrooms renovation. Where? Where are they going to be at?
So we have, um, we, we have an initial design done with three concepts. We need to do a design review, uh, either later this month or early in January. Once we have a review of the design, get direction on, on which of the concepts. Um, we just have to take that design, move it into what's called construction documents, which will take about three to four weeks, and then that project will, will be ready to go out to bid. So, um, early 2024, that project design will be ready to, uh, send out for bidding.
I just want to know, and I've mentioned this before, um, about the restroom towards the back loading dock. Is that going to be looked at?
It is included in the scope of the project.
Cool. Thank you.
How many restrooms are there in the SC?
I'm sorry?
Restrooms are there in the SC?
Um. I'm, I'm, in the neighborhood of 13 to 14. Yeah, there's, there's four per floor. I mean, there's, um, I, I, the exact number, but it's in, it's in the neighborhood of 14.
Trustee De Vardy?
This whole discussion of the baseball diamond is really interesting to me. I played municipal league, rec league, uh, softball until four years ago, when injuries caused me to retire. But, um, do we have softball diamonds also?
We do.
How many?
One.
And what, I'd like to look at them sometime when I tour the grounds. So where are they? The baseball and the softball?
They're off to the side. They would be, um, south and west of, uh, the Health and Fitness Center. So they're, they're on the west side of the Health and Fitness.
Okay, and the, now, baseball diamond has grass infield, softball diamonds have dirt in fields.
Correct.
Um, the, a lot of the City Van Arbor softball diamonds are in terrible condition. But I, I know the league, the leagues are way down in, uh, popularity, so there's fewer teams that play. But do, have we made, uh, available our softball diamond for use to some of these municipal and community rec leagues?
Uh, I believe so. We do run, we have a rental agreement and, and teams and areas and groups can rent them out.
But do, is it a regular thing with any, either IPSE or Ann Arbor Rec or anybody or? Sure.
I don't think it's with Ann Arbor, it's HILANDI, but we have like Sunday leagues. So as long as the leagues are, we're running outside of our schedule, our softball team's schedule, but there are regular scheduled rentals that use both the baseball and softball diamond.
And we've got a softball team that plays competitively against other community colleges?
Yes. We have club sports.
Oh, I'd love to come see a game.
Me too, me too.
Yes, we have club sports from both baseball and softball.
Um, but, so the club sports are interscholastic or intermural?
Uh, not interscholastic. So we'll play other club teams, other community colleges.
I'd love to come see a game if I, if you could just get us a schedule next season.
Yeah.
Okay.
Get you to suit up?
I'd, maybe I'll sell hot dogs.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Trustee Hatcher?
I'd much rather, um, pay for softball and baseball fields than parking lots.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There any remarks, um, from the Board of Trustees? Trustee De Vardy?
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday season and a good New Year. Three things. When I showed up today, two things to, when I showed up today. The new Washtenaw voice, which I'm happy to welcome back. I just saw it today, so I haven't read it. But it really feels good to have it in my hand, and I'll read it, um, probably tomorrow. Secondly, we have a tremendous video program here, and I didn't even know this until I walked in the door. But we have, the, the students here are putting on a video Fall 2023 Festival, which is running tonight over here at Towesley. Um, they're probably going to be giving awards out at 10:00 PM. I just learned about this tonight and had wonderful conversation with one of the students that helps organize it. Um, this is tremendous. Um, I, I know for a fact because of submissions I've seen to the Ann Arbor Film Festival, uh, of the high quality that our video program has. And right now, there's, it's running in the Towesley Auditorium. It's really, uh, a tremendous thing, and it was a big surprise to me. Third, most importantly, um, when I was driving to an event earlier this month, uh, my wife was looking at MLive online, and I hope the President is going to speak to this in her remarks. Washtenaw Community College, number one in the state of Michigan, rated by two different rating agencies and services. And it's, uh, it just speaks to our, the quality of the education here and also to the reasonable cost of that education for in-district students. And that was called out by one of the ra- rating, um, institutions that it's, the reasonable cost of the educa- of the high-quality education here for in-district, um, students is beyond compare. So I really want to call that out. Hopefully, the President will speak to it or people will look at the MLive article, um, and, uh, be, it's something that we could really be proud of.
Um, last week, I think it was, yeah, last week, uh, I attended the, um, Governance Leadership Institute. Um, normally it's out of state, but somehow or another, um, our association, um, Michigan Community College Association was able to bring it to Lansing, um, so that the in-state colleges and presidents and trustees and pretty much some others, um, from those schools could attend. It was very, very well done. It was excellent, to be, be honest with you. Um, there is a book I was able to get. Uh, it's called Trusteeship in Community Colleges. Um, it's a very, very, uh, good book that, um, they talked about. It talks about being a trustee and how to be a good trustee and what is needed to be a trustee. One of the things I want to bring out of this book, I just happened, when I was sitting at my table with some of my colleagues, and I was looking at the contributing authors. You would never guess in a million years who is one of the contributing authors in this book. And that is our very own David Rutledge, past trustee. He, he contributed to this, to this, this book. Uh, I, I haven't gone through it yet, but I just know that, um, through the years of being here at the school, I know that he had a lot to say about it, especially from him being, going on to the state government. But it was really good to see that his name was a part of this, all these other. But it was really good to see that his name was a part of this, all these other people here, past president of the Michigan, I mean, Association Community College Trustees and others. And so it just made my heart feel kind of warm about that. Any case, another thing I want to say is the National Legislative Summit is going to be in February, it's February 4th through the 7th. They're going to have excellent speaker there, Amy Walter, and she is very articulate about politics and government and stuff. So if anybody was interested from our panel, that would be great, our trustees. I think, this is just me, excuse me, I always say this, but the more we learn of how to be a trustee, the better we are. And the better we are, we understand the rules and things that trustees can and cannot do, and there's a reason why. And I, I just, I don't push myself on anybody. I know the rules. I don't push myself on to anyone about those rules. But if you want to know, ask. If you want to know even more, call the association. The president is Brandy Johnson. You can talk with her or any of her staff, and I think that they will answer all your questions because they're really not, a lot, very knowledgeable about what is, what is it to be a trustee? Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Hatcher?
I'd like to second the article by David Rutledge. He, he wrote a great article for them on how important it was for trustees to ask questions at board meetings, and I've taken that to heart. Just like to make a comment about Washtenaw being one of the best community colleges in the state. And I think, I'd just like to comment on the fact that what I feel, it's just me, is that our public face, and this is to Rose's credit and to a lot of our staff's credit, is outstanding. And we hear it often at board meetings about our public face, about the union, unions that are using our facility, about the, what the auto shows that we're part of. And that part is really the public face. Someone brought up the WCC magazine that goes to everybody's house and just said, how wonderful your school is. I said, you're absolutely right. But I do have concerns about the internal machinations about governance and change and leadership. And it's very important, I think, the new VPI position, who will essentially run the school rather than the public face, is very, very important coming up. And this has to do with the change in, what's it called? The thing we're changing to? Campus and all of that and, and people getting along. I mean, there are, we just had a meeting, we were talking about how well that's going and the problems that, in terms of communication. And there are five groups on this campus concerned with this transition, and they, they're not talking to each other very well, and they need to start talking to each other more because that has to work well. Because what we do here is not go to auto shows, what we do here is teach. And that's where our credit comes from, and I want to make sure that that stays excellent. Thanks.
President Blanca, you have your remarks?
Well, Trustee DeVarty, there's not much more I can say about our award. But I am really very proud of this college and the work that everyone does, from the leadership, the trustees, all the way, and that's what I meant by leadership, all the way through the entire organization. And while I agree, it is imperfect. I think the good news is, even though sometimes it seems small, slow, we are hearing it. We do try our very, very best to respond, and some of that is just the nature of things right now. And it's, I think if you asked any person here how they felt about their job, they answered the same way, because every day is a new day, probably for everyone on this board that works, or maybe even doesn't work. Every day is a new day. This year, our, our counselors and advisors, our care team saw more students than they ever have in the past. Students and, you know, and I've been, I was listening to this neuroscientist and she was talking about, and I hate when people use COVID as an excuse, but the impact that COVID had on so many, so many of us and so many of our students' lives and all of us have been impacted by that. Not only impacted because of the disease itself, but because these two years, we didn't talk to anybody, two years, we were away. And then came back and we tried to remember how we worked. And I'm not making an excuse for that, but all of a sudden, people wanted to work from home, and everything was changing, everything was changing. So you're right, there are a lot of, we are not perfect, and there are, you're right about the five groups, you know, I'm glad you brought that to my attention, that aren't speaking or communicating, but that's good to know. The worst part would be if I don't do anything about it. You know, you mentioned it to us, and so that's good to know, and now we look forward and say, where are we with that group? And are we making progress with it? And we'll just keep working at it, just keep working at it. These teachers, I love teaching, and I don't know if I could go back into that classroom. It is a very challenging occupation now, and I can't think of any teaching position. I thought before it was this way, that could be more challenging than being a community college professor or teacher. I can't, I can't think of any, because every other, you know, all of us have taught. You know, I taught high school, they were all the same, all the same age, pretty much the same, other than their differences. I knew what to expect every day. I taught university level. My favorite was the doctoral level because you could tell those people to climb Mount Everest, they wanted the degree so bad, they'd ask you how long you wanted it to take. They'd do anything for that doctorate degree, right, Dr. Tucker? So, I mean, I've done that, and you know at a university, people can afford it, most part, or they have a scholarship, some are struggling, but they have a GPA, or used, they used to, or they couldn't get in. You work in a community college, this is truly the people's college. These instructors, and I appreciate it so much because when I did teach in a community college, I couldn't wait for my first day. I was ready, I had my whole term planned out because I'd never taught in a community college before. And when I stood at the door and I met my students one by one, I knew I had to just scrap every single thing I thought of, because my class was so diverse. And that had to be the most challenging teaching opportunity that I've ever had. So put on top of that, all of this new stuff, Canvas, online, all the regulations that we're getting from the state, just normal disagreements, put that on top of this already a job that is just one of the most important and challenging occupations. I want to say thank you. Thank you. Thank you faculty, because this, it's not easy. Open door concept, it's a gift, but it's open door. And we teach, and you're right, Ruth, or Trustee Hatcher. That is, one of the reasons that we are successful is because of our teaching and our learning and our advising. That's why we are, our coaching. You're absolutely right. And also, our low tuition really did a good job with that too. I want to thank you for that. But no, we do keep our costs as affordable as possible. So it's, it's, it's challenging, and you know, I'm sorry that it's just not perfect every day, but I can say I believe all of us, all of us, as evidenced by our lunch yesterday, Ms. Kissel, all of us are trying to be as collaborative as possible. Do we miss the mark? Yeah, sometimes, but maybe more often than not, but at least we're, we're still in the game. So thank you. And another evidence of that success was last, yesterday, we had our pinning ceremony for our nursing students, and that was so amazing and touching. And again, now we have, now we have renewed, or actually we were, again, named as, or you know, given the recognition as a center for excellence. Our NCLEX scores, thank you, Sherri Lambert, the dean, thank you. Are you here? Thank you. Thank you, you and your faculty, working with those NCLEX scores. If you could see those NCLEX scores from five years ago until today, those scores have improved tremendously. So there's so much to be grateful for, and I just want to thank everyone for that. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, and we'll just come back on January 2nd. I hate that day, January 2nd. We'll come back January 2nd, re-energized and just trying again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to add one other thing, and that is to thank the WCCA for the news you can use. I hope it continues. It's very important that the board know this kind of information, and, and thanks for the work for putting it together. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to tab E, this is action item, 2023 Emeritus Staff Status Recipients. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees grant Emeritus status as stated in Board Policy 5045, policy on Emeritus Staff as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Board?
Any discussion?
How many of these are teaching faculty? Linda knows?
Six?
Six, okay.
Six are teaching?
Okay.
Okay. Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes, I just, I'm looking at the number of years and one that stands out head and shoulders is Ruth Walsh.
Yes, I recognize her.
She was here when I came, and I just give her a lot of respect and, and honor her for being here for so long. It shows a commitment.
Since we're talking, may I have another comment? There's another person here, 35 years, just had an anniversary, Linda Blakey. 35 years at the college.
I mean to put you on the spot, you got a speech?
It's been fun.
Thank you, thank you.
Beautiful.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Okay, tab F is the approval of the 2023-24 Faculty Sabbatical. And this is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the requested 2023-2024 Faculty Sabbatical leave as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Board?
Any discussion?
I'll just say this real quick. Sounds like this is really a nice training that Ms. Jepson is going to be doing, and I just hope that when she brings it back that it'll be shared with the board so we can see exactly what she's doing, because I don't know some of these terminologies that she, that was written up, but it looks interesting and I'd like to see if it's be shared with us.
Trustee Hatcher?
I was just thinking, this is one of the sort of leftover ones from the fall? Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
I do have a question also. The previous sabbaticals, they weren't of such where they would come back and present their, their works. Is that correct?
No, because I asked. We'll do that. We will do that. I don't know that the previous ones this year were completed yet. I'm not sure.
There are some that are either starting this semester, or there are some who are completing this semester.
I asked because I remember, which was the last one that I saw here, and it could have been one after that, but there was a young lady that had on her sabbatical on type font. You remember that? And which was just fascinating, so that's why I brought that up again.
Yeah, it's a good point. Okay, we'll make sure. Vanessa?
Vanessa, please call the roll, please.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Moving on to new business for discussion, the Contract for Critical Incident Mapping. Provost Blakey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Have Chief Leacher with me. So we're going to talk about incident mapping. So for campus safety, a key factor in maintaining a safe campus is response time in an incident. And a key factor in response time is directing first responders to the location of the incident. Collaborative Response Graphics is a mapping process that was developed by the military. It provides key campus and building access information to first responders in emergency situations. The data that's generated is compatible with multiple emergency response systems. There's two types of CRGs. There's macro, there's a sample of a macro here that provides standard labeling for buildings, parking lots, roadways, campus access points. A micro CRG would provide standard labeling for floor levels, hallway nomenclature, door access points, main utility shut offs, roof access points, fire alarm, control panels, security boxes, and AEDs and trauma kits. Both of these are key information things that first responders need to have in the time of an incident. So you can see that these, this information is fed into our 911 centers, it's also fed into other life safety systems, so it immediately tells when there's a 911 call, it would immediately tell first responders, there's an incident in LA 210, it would tell them exactly what parking lot to go in, what door to go in, and how to get to 210 in the fastest way possible. So the Critical Response Group is a New Jersey-based company that builds micro and micro CRGs. It distributes these CRGs to first responders through a variety of public safety software applications that we talked about. Several local school districts have already completed incident mapping. Several local school districts have already completed incident mapping using this response group. The state really nicely provided a appropriation of $222,600 to provide incident mapping for Washtenaw Community College. The Critical Response Group is an approved single vendor source for this process. And the proposed contract with Critical Response Group covers mapping of all our buildings and campus, and also provides for maintenance of the maps for the next six years with that appropriation. So, that's the proposal that you have with you this evening. Are there any questions?
Trustee Devarty?
So, it's called the Critical Incident Mapping.
Yes.
But it's not mapping incidents, it's mapping the campus
For incidents, correct.
First responders to respond to an incident.
Correct. It's called critical, but it's, yes, it's, it's mapping the campus, both the external part of the campus and all the buildings, with those key parts that we talked about, for to respond in a, in a critical incident.
Great. I, I really think this is important. Just like our, the remote lockdown we have
Yes.
provided for the building, I think is an important response, or it's kind of going, looking ahead at possibilities and presenting us with the technology to respond the best we can, and I think this is doing the same thing.
Yes. Well, we recently, under Chief Leacher and Deputy Chief Sekman, I don't know if you noticed, when you walk around buildings, there's numbers that every door is labeled, and that was the start of, to tell first responders exactly which door. Some of our buildings have 23 to 24 different doors that you can enter or exit. This goes way beyond that in terms of providing key information to first responders.
Thank you.
Trustee Hatcher?
The first responders will have this program? Do they already have it, or everybody's different? Is it all the same for their locations? I mean, do they have a specific program for Washtenaw, a specific, and another responder? I'm just asking how complicated it is for them.
John's going to answer that question.
Good evening. It's not very complicated at all because this company has mapped most of the county already, including Ann Arbor schools.
So, it's the same program?
It's the same concept, it's the same group. As a matter of fact, as an aside, I believe Ann Arbor schools originally contracted with their competitor and got partway through the process and then backed out of that contract and went with CRG because they're just so good at what they do. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes?
How many educational institutions in the state have this CRG program? Is it widespread?
It is widespread, Trustee Milliken. I do not know how many. But again, I know that this funding was originally appropriated for K-12 schools. And it's my understanding that CRG got the bulk of that, of that contract.
Did we go to the state to request the grant? They brought it to us?
The state
Great.
gave it to us.
So, yeah, they had originally done the funding for K-12, and then they basically said, okay, community colleges, you're next. And so, we just got this appropriation. They didn't ask, they just gave it to us this year. So.
Is it a, trust, anybody else before I speak? Is this software, is there downtime in loading it, installing in what we already use, or are we replacing it?
No. So, this is, no. So, this will just, when they get all the mapping done, it'll just load into the public safety software systems that are not just our systems, that are countywide systems.
And it's fairly quick to do this, to get it up and running?
I get dissipated. That question, I don't have an answer for it.
Probably so, yeah. I didn't think so. I just thought I asked.
I mean, there'll be, when they're mapping, there won't be, they won't, none of our systems will be down while they're mapping. They'll be mapping externally, and then we'll, we'll build all the pieces, and then we'll load it into the software systems.
So, I guess my next question kind of bounces off of Trustee Hatcher in a way. Is there like, since K-12 has it, and other schools have it, now that we're going to have it, is there like a remote satellite place that monitors all of this? You know, like there was mapping for first responders to come. So, 911 has it, and they can see what we've got going on here that they need to respond to?
Correct.
If I'm articulating that correctly, because I'm thinking of like Star Trek. You know, there's somebody up there that's pushing files in the air, and they can see things that, that's going on on our
Right. So, it'll be all part of the 911 system. And so, as soon as a call goes out, we have an incident on in LA 210, they'll be able to just bring up their phones that they're responding with, and they'll be able to see exactly what is the fastest way to get to LA 210, which parking lot to park in, which door to go in, which stairway to get to that, that room in the fastest way possible.
Okay.
But as far as constant monitoring of everything going on on our campus,
Okay, cool. All right, great.
If we get a 911 call gets initiated, and the 911 center pulls up, they can see exactly where that call came from. Then because of this mapping system, direct first responders to that exact
It's an access tool for them. That's awesome. Thank you. Trustee Devarty?
Oh, I know there's cooperation if there's a big incident, that police forces that are adjacent respond and support. So, would we, let's, if it's a small, some small incident, we get initial notice, our, our campus police force? Or does it go out to all the police forces? And like, where does the information, where does, where the maps reside? Because I, I think it's useful for us to have the maps, but it's as your police force, but it's also useful for 911 so that assisting agencies have that as well.
Agreed. And it is integrated to those systems, to Washtenaw County 911 and ours, ours as well. One of the nice things about CRG is once we've got the system built, it's ours. Everything we've got, it doesn't belong to them. It's, it's all ours. So, we can do with that what we want. After six years, if we want to just say we're, we're good, we keep what we've got. Of course, if that helps, if that answers your question.
Well, I want us to share it.
It'll make
regionally, because
And it will be shared.
Anybody that'll be, I don't want it to say, oh, it's ours, we're going to keep it and not share it.
No, Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department, through Washtenaw County Dispatch, will have access to every single one of our maps, to everyone, every single one of our buildings.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Contract is not to exceed $222,600. So, is this something that will be continually appropriated through the state to keep, keep this software up and running?
I don't know that. So, this, this appropriation was given for this year. Again, I think in the past years, they've done K-12. And this year, they did community colleges to be appropriated. And so, with this amount, we were able to get the, it covers building of all the maps and the maintenance of the maps for six years. So, we wouldn't need anything else until seven years from now. But the state has not committed to say, oh, we're going to give you this money every five years. Again, this kind of money came out of nowhere. So, I think they had some extra funding and wanting to keep schools and community colleges safe. They did the appropriation for schools to be able to do this process.
That's wonderful. Thank you, state. Any other discussions, questions? Okay, David.
So, this is coming to us as a discussion item for action next month.
That's correct.
Are there any time constraints, time considerations that would counsel us to act more quickly? It seems like something that could wait till next month.
I wouldn't mind if you approved it tonight.
I know, but it's, does it make that much difference?
I don't think it's going to matter.
I mean, if some of the, some things, if it's timely, I'm happy to move forward.
We haven't gotten anything that says, but we need this time.
In a timely fashion, I'd rather sit on it, think about it, see if there are any other questions.
That's fine.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm on the roll. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Tab H. This is also an action item. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the agreement with Siemens Industry, Inc. for one-year agreement not to exceed $207,738. Do I hear a motion?
Support.
Any discussion?
Good, already.
Okay. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yes?
This is a new item that we haven't seen before. So, I'm wondering
Threat for critical mapping?
We're on Tab H.
Have we seen this before?
Oh, we haven't.
We should get a briefing on it.
Yes, we should.
Yeah.
BP Beschi, please approach the podium, please.
And there is a reason for that. There is. We should have put that in our board memo. I apologize.
So, for discussion and possible action is a renewal of our Siemens contract for Building Automation System. So, that stands for BAS. It's the system we use to monitor our HVAC equipment, control it. It, it programs it on during the daytime, shuts it off at night, helps prolong. A lot of advantages too, having a BAS system. And Siemens maintains this for us. So, we have essentially in all of our buildings, a huge investment with this control system that monitors equipment, programs it on and off. And what we're getting from them is, is serviced twice a month. They, they bring folks out, and we service the equipment. They help with the controls, troubleshooting the alarms that we have. There's six scheduled programmings for winter and cooling. So, twice a year, they're, they're doing programming for either the heating season or the cooling system. We get 24/7, 365-day emergency call response. They'll respond within two hours of a, of an incident. And this is a, it's a continuation. We've started this program. This will be year four or possibly five. I think we had a three-year program, renewed it once. And so, we're, we're five years into this. In the time that we've started this program on the controls of the PM for the system, our hot-cold calls that we get for temperature inconsistencies within space has dropped by almost 75 or 80%. So, they've made great headway in, in just getting our systems, when I say systems, mechanical air conditioning recommissioned and working to their optimum. So, again, we have a, a large investment in this Building Automation System. And this is a, what we feel a very important preventive maintenance contract to service that.
So, this is more of a renewal?
I'm sorry.
Somewhat. A continuation of a service
It is a continuation
that we already have invested in.
Correct.
So, so this is a renewal of a contract?
That is correct.
And the previous contract was, was for how many years? Because I don't remember this in the last year.
We, we did a one-year renewal last year. The original contract was a three-year contract. It expired last December. We renewed it for one year. We want to do one more one-year renewal. And our objective is, after this year, we should have commissioned enough equipment and, and done enough preventive maintenance that we feel we can probably right-size or downsize the contract moving forward, and then look at an extended period.
So, last year's contract was for how much?
Just, just under 200. It was
So, this is up by what, 4%?
A little over 5%.
5%. And, and so if the contract runs through December, it sounds like this is something we need to approve now.
That is correct.
In order to keep it going.
That is correct. They did not, yes, they did not get us our renewal contract until then in November. So, we were a little late getting it to the, on the agenda.
Okay, so I have one request, because I do like to look at things, even if we move it to immediate action, I like to, if we don't need to, be able to think about it and look at it and see if there are any questions that we need to ask to respond to the following month. I'd encourage Siemens to get us a contract if we're going to renew it for one or more years next year, if we could maybe get it in our November packet. And that way, we could look at it instead of being under the gun and have to renew it.
Completely agree. And, and we made that request to them this year as well, that we needed it sooner.
President Blanca, did you have any
No, they, again, Trustee Devarty took everything right out of my mouth.
I, I'm just wondering, I guess this is for our general counsel, is it new business? Do we need a motion to move this to immediate action if we're going to act on it today?
No, because it's already an action.
An action, I don't know. It's on as an action. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, why, why was the last contract lesser than this contract?
Primarily just an inflationary increase. But, yeah, they, they, we
It's the same, same services.
Same scope, yeah. We're getting the same amount of hours per month of service. We're getting the same 24/7, 365 days. Last year, we had specifically in the contract, the replacement of four panels that they did. This year, we have a, an allocation of hours to address alarming within the programming of our, our system. So, we, we've traded some, some time within it. But it's the, essentially the same amount of time and scope and service and support.
I'd move approval.
I think we already moved it.
No, we didn't.
We didn't.
I'd second. Support.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Jared Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarty?
Devarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Well, we have approached the end of our last board meeting for 2023. And it's been a wonderful year. You got, all of us, when I say you guys, all of us have done a phenomenal job. The school is the best in the Midwest and beyond.
We're expanding.
I'm really excited to have spent this year as chair. And thank you for your patience as I laugh and giggle my way through some of, some of my hiccups. I wish you all a fabulous holiday season with your family and your friends. Please be safe and look forward to seeing you again in the new year. I would like to hear and entertain the motion to adjourn the monthly meeting. Oh, Trustee Hatcher?
Thank you for running meetings very well.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and your comments as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'll move for adjournment.
Board?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's now adjourned.